Okay, we're just coming out of closed session. We're not starting the meeting yet, so I don't want anyone to get excited. Mrs. Peak, could you please call us out of closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to. The council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed item number one, conference with legal counsel on potential litigation against Adam Engineering Construction and its surety Ohio Casualty Company concerning contract number 6619 dated November 18th, 2021 for the construction of the Fire Station Three Apparatus Storage Building and performance bond number 024256607. The City Council discussed the matter and provided direction on potential settlement, including the authorization to initiate litigation in the event that the matter does not settle. The council, and that was unanimous direction. The council also discussed potential litigation under Government Code Section 5495, 6.9, Sub-D, Sub-1, one potential action relating to SEMA construction, the contractor for the San Marcos Creek District Infrastructure Project, many CIP project numbers. The City Council discussed the proposed settlement with the city manager, city attorney, and Development Services Director, and provided direction to staff regarding approval of potential settlement resulting from mediation with respect to subcontractor SRK. And that was also unanimous direction, and that concludes the closed session report.
Thank you, Mrs. Peak, and with that, the special meeting is adjourned. So we'll start the other meeting in just a few minutes. Welcome, everyone, to the San Marcos City Council for October 8th, 2024. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have Father Brad Easterbrooks from St. Mark's Catholic Church.
Thank you, ma'am. Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for the blessings you've bestowed on your people here in this community. Tonight, we offer our thoughts and our prayers especially for those who are responding to the hurricanes, Helene and Milton. We pray that you protect the people who live in those areas and the first responders. We ask that you help guide the City Council at this meeting tonight so that this meeting is productive and works towards justice and the common good in the community here in San Marcos. We give thanks for your presence and providence in our lives. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, could we please have the roll call, Mr. Skulik?
Yeah, Councilmember Musgrove, Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, if the council could meet me down in front, would that be great? Lot of organization going on this evening. Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. We have the San Marcos Prevention Coalition with here this evening. We have Letty Robles, and I think I saw Casey String, didn't I? Okay. Anyway, if you want to come down, please. We're really excited to recognize everyone that's here this evening. Oh, there he is. Casey, come on down. Anyway, we're excited. I'm gonna have you come in and take this proclamation, and then we will get to all of the schools that are here. And if we have other, I'm gonna go back through the list if I don't think they're here, just in case someone gets here kind of late, so it's okay. We'll make allowances for that. Anyway, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes San Marcos Youth Prevention Coalition, I feel like I shouldn't have my back to you, for Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st. Life is a movie, film, drug-free. Whereas, Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, and whereas, the San Marcos City Council has made a strong commitment to alcohol, tobacco, and other drug prevention education and activities, and whereas, we recognize that alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use can bring alienation, academic failure, violence, and hopelessness to the youth of San Marcos. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of San Marcos joins other cities throughout the nation to declare October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages all citizens to join our commitment to a healthy, drug-free community in which to raise a generation of healthy, drug-free youth. Thank you very much. And then I know Letty's prepared because she always is. If you'd like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank Mayor Jones for allowing us to come here today, as we have in the last over 10 years, as well as the whole City Council. San Marcos Prevention Coalition has been in existence for over 12 years, and we've always had a great collaboration with all different sectors of our community. And one of the most important ones is the San Marcos Unified School District. So I want to thank you for being here and representing your schools. Without the collaboration, we couldn't have such a thriving and healthy community. The mission of our coalition, and will continue to be, is substance prevention among youth especially, and of the whole community here in San Marcos. So I want to thank you for being here.
I'll just be super brief. We just want to thank all the schools for being here. I know how busy it is this time of year, so we want to thank all the schools. We want to thank the parents and the teachers, and of course, the students coming down to receiving their proclamation. It's really encouraging for us as a coalition to see so many people willing to support our cause to reduce and prevent substance use among young people in San Marcos. So thank you so much.
Wait, you're not gonna be in the pictures? No? Yeah, yeah, I think so. Come on, you guys do a lot of work on this. All right, first is Correo Elementary. Come on down. Where are the kids? Are they at school still? I know it's the Padre game. We're here!
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And missing part of it, but I see how fast you're walking out of here. Discovery Elementary, come on down. All right, it must be us. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you so much. Okay, Nob Hill Elementary. And we thank you for your commitment. Isn't Mrs. Sinella coming over? Good job. La Casa Meadows. Okay, Mission Hills High School. Wow, look at the grizzlies showed up.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Santa Lejo Middle School. Wow. You guys are the Eagles, right? Is that right? Yeah, oh my gosh, the Golden Eagles. And wow, look, wow, I don't even think I can shake everyone's hands. No, that's for you, yes. Thank you. No, we're not keeping that. That's all yours. You guys get a golden star. Okay, San Marcos Middle School. You go, girl. That's all I could say. Congratulations. All right, Santa Lejo Elementary. No? Okay, I'm gonna go through everything real quick, just in case. Yay, okay. Just like, wait, nobody. Thank you so much. Okay, we're just gonna do a double check. Double Peak School? Let's just give them a hand real quick. Foothills High School. Julianne Leach Tag Elementary. La Brada Academy. Paloma Elementary. Richland Elementary. San Marcos Elementary. San Marcos High School. San Marcos Unified School District. Twin Oaks Elementary. Twin Oaks High School. Yes!
All right, let me find it, let me find it.
Thank goodness we have Phil.
All right, then Woodland Park Middle School. Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and I'm gonna let you go so you can go watch the, watch the one big group picture with everybody? With every, everybody? Okay, let's do it!
Squeeze in as best you can, couple rows, three or four rows. Squeeze in a little bit. Squeeze in. Start smiling. All right. Thank you.
Oh, yeah!
Bye, Tori.
All right. All right, next up, consent calendar. Do we have any items that any council members would like to pull?
Move to approve tonight's consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? Okay. Seeing none, motion passes. Moving on to oral communications, we have John Mosher, followed by Jeffrey Papendick, Marlene Walder, in that order. So, John, come on down. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Michelle, Helen, Phil. I want to thank you guys for the quick response on the problems we've had at San Marcos Mobile Estates between our power, then the solar power problem, now we're dealing with some water. But I appreciate your reaching out, and, Miss Peak, I appreciate having Jaclyn reach out to us. I was talking to her yesterday about the solar and how we get the right information to quit these overbuildings. Back here today, we have residents from San Marcos Mobile Estates and also Lakeview Mobile Estates, back to protecting our seniors and our future. But I want to thank you guys for the response and the fact that we have communication going back and forth, and we can ask you pretty much anything. Go Padres!
Go Padres! Thank you, John. Next up, Jeffrey Papendick, and then Marlene Walder.
I just want to thank you all for keeping the ball rolling on the senior mobile home park overlay zone or district. We haven't decided what that's gonna be called yet. I guess you guys will decide that. Any, some recent developments, I know we've been trying to figure out, mobile home residency law allows us to have six months before the new rules and regulations go into place, and we're trying to figure out when the last person in our park had been served. However, the management isn't real forthcoming with that, but I believe it was the first week of this month. So if you fast forward six months, that would be the first week in April. So we got those six months before the proposed new rules and regulations take place. And I had a couple of questions. I probably should email them to you, but I'll just say them real quick here. And thank you for your email. And, you know, what we are wondering is, is the park required, the park owner required to submit these proposed changes, the changing to all ages? Is he required to send those proposed changes to the city at the same time he informs the residents? And if so, does the city have to approve those, or what happens? You know, I just wanted to kind of know the process after we get notified sometime in the future, you know, in April. Anyway, that's, and I'll email you that, or John will. So that's really all I have to say. That's all that's happening right now. But, you know, we're all still real interested and really thankful that you're helping us with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And yes, please send those an email to Mrs. Peak. Appreciate it. Thank you. Marlene Walder. Welcome, Marlene.
Thank you. Council members, I'm making that quick, because my issue is really with the growth that's coming on. Every time there is growth, we have more coyotes, but this time, we have a huge influx of rats and mice. Now, true, a lot of it's because our park doesn't do anything, but when you catch 11 rats in three days, something's going on. And I have people who said they never had rats in their house, and the rats are in the house. I'm not the only one who catches rats. Most of them are being poisoned. I don't poison. We have had maybe 40 rats a day being caught. Every time they do new construction, and we're getting, we had first on Myers, and now we have the one on Barham, and I even see on Nextdoor everyone complaining. But the big thing is, and I fought this with the Traffic Commission and the Planning Commission a couple years ago, before the houses came in, that Woodland Parkway underpass had to be completed, and the decision of how the road on Barham is to be, when I moved here, the on-ramp was supposed to be moved towards the college, and my part of Barham was to be closed off. Well, that changed, and that was supposed to happen within five years from the time I moved here. Well, not at the time I moved here, later, but nothing happened, and it just became worse and worse. I lived near a highway when I bought in, and now I live near a freeway, and I'm a mobile home right on top of it. When they blasted to make the freeway wider the last time, and this is many years ago, but I had a hanging macrame table above my tub, and the blasting had knocked it down. The city couldn't do anything. The contractor refused to call me back. When I went over there personally, you can't find anyone. I've heard with the new, the Creek District, those mobile homes also had sliding of their mobile homes, splitting for the same reason. The blasting does affect the land underneath and shakes our houses. And my house got greatly shaken, and I had to have it re-levelled at that time also, but it had damage inside from the blasting. But the parking, the situation with cars parking inside our park that don't belong, okay.
Thank you, Marlene. Okay, moving on to reports, including AB 1234 reporting requirements. Sand Egg is the first item on the agenda. We didn't have too much going on at the last meeting, except the update for the We didn't have too much going on at the last meeting except the update for the regional plan and what that's looking like moving forward. So, one of the things that we talked about that's pretty significant is originally Sandag, and Ed and I have really been complaining about this for a few years now, three years, that they were talking about converting two lanes that are general purpose lanes today to managed lanes and then also adding the HOV lanes and making those managed lanes, so it'd be two managed lanes each way. And what ended up is now happening is there's not going to be any conversion, so the two HOV lanes that are going to be built, those are predicted to be managed lanes, but they are not converting any actual lanes that are there today to managed lanes due to the amount of complaining that we have done. And then also, they're working on the connectors for the 78 and the HOV lanes as well as the widening of the, well, there's actually going to be some auxiliary lanes that they will be putting in. And one of the things that they're talking about doing is they're going to have to increase the bridge width, which would go right to what you're talking about, Marlene. So, I don't have a timeframe on that, though. And then also, there is going to be in the new plan, a bus that will come from Temecula or Marietta, somewhere in that area, all the way down to CSU San Marcos and that will be dedicated to bring people from Temecula, Marietta, down to San Diego County because that'll keep some cars off of the road. So, anyway, those things, did I have, did I have any else, anything else that are going, that's going to directly affect us?
No, that, so the express lane is from Twin Oaks to the 15 express lanes and originally, they were going to take out the right shoulder, which was a big issue for us for safety reasons. That, part of the freeway, actually the lanes are fairly wide. If they just take maybe a foot each, they're going to put the express lane where the center divide is now. They'll have to reset the grade on it because it's set for runoff, but that's all part of the program, so we're not gonna lose any of our regular lanes. And for those that need to get on the express lane or can do it, it will speed that process up and it will alleviate some of the pressure on those of us that don't need to use the express lanes to go either into Escondido or just south on 15. So, I think it's gonna be a win for all and they did say the environmentals are almost complete, which is usually the first stumbling block to get through that process and then they can start putting their plans together for work.
Oh, and one more thing, you know, we had passed a resolution in 2022, I thought, no, it was actually 2021, right before the regional plan was approved, to not allow Sandag to take either a lane from San Marcos Boulevard or the median out. And so, they've actually said that they're not planning on having that in the next plan, but we do have our resolution in place that we would fight that if they were to move forward with that. So, that's at least one good thing, you know, people ask me, how would that be on San Marcos Boulevard? Yes, they would have to take some of the real estate on San Marcos Boulevard, definitely, in my opinion. Taking out the median would not make sense because that's one of the things that makes San Marcos so pretty, is our medians and all of our trees and all of that. So, anyway, stay tuned, we haven't seen the actual final plan, but this is a framework for it that we did approve. And so, that is, and we have a meeting coming up this Friday. You probably saw in the news, there's some more scandals down at Sandag. We're always watching that very closely and so we'll see what happens moving forward. Okay, next up is going to be League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We have on the calendar a meeting for Monday, but the actual division meeting and the state meeting begins, is it Wednesday or Thursday, Councilmember Menounias?
Wednesday. We're in Long Beach.
So, that will be in lieu of the scheduled meeting for Monday? Okay, so there'll be a report back at the next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, North County, I'm sorry, North County Transit District, I almost said dispatch, but it's North County Transit District.
We meet next week.
Okay, North County Dispatch. Oh, your microphone's off, sorry.
Sorry about that. Our next meeting will be in December, the last meeting of the year.
Okay, Clean Energy Alliance.
We had a regulatory update and a report back from our CEO and the thing that's most noteworthy is we have a $600,000, it's not surplus funds, but it's their program funds for distribution that we've identified and we're looking for ways to provide the greatest benefit for our customer base and we looked at the total customer base we have and it would be pennies if you tried to spread it out over billing. So, we're looking at those that could be probably most benefit from it. My recommendation was for CEO staff to reach out to Sylvia at our housing to see where we could put that money to good use for some of the folks that really struggle, not just in the affordable housing, but also in our mobile home community. But there will be an issue about the metering boxes, but we're gonna work through all that and we're gonna see what we can do to bring some of that money back home.
What was, Councilmember, what was the surplus amount?
600,000.
Oh, thank you.
For just our city?
In total, so then, so we have the seven cities, so it'll be, so that was the other question.
By population?
Do we do it on population, do we do it on need, do we get feedback from the different cities, how they would like to use it, and then figure out the best way to apportion that money.
And length of membership should also be one of the metrics.
Well, that would discount a couple of our sister cities, but as things go with governmental meetings, we agreed to table it until the October meeting. So, maybe have an answer by the end of the month.
Okay, City Council Business Visits, we had Diamond Environmental, Councilmember Musgrove and Sanella.
Yeah, so Councilmember Musgrove and I visited Diamond Environmental and met with Eric DeYoung, the owner. Environmental was, Diamond Environmental Services was established in 1998 and has been a trusted rental company for 26 years with their San Marcos location serving our community for 15 years. They have nine locations throughout Southern California and their San Marcos site, it really stands out as, I call it their corporate headquarters, but it's their central hub of all operations. The company has been family owned and operated for many years, I think all of us are familiar with the DeYoung family. Eric, one of the owners of the company, was born and raised in San Marcos. I've been meeting quite a few people lately who are born and raised in San Marcos, which is interesting. Diamond Environmental Services is one of the top 10 companies in their industry and their San Marcos location is known as a one-stop shop. Driven past it many times, I think we all probably seen it with what they do with their porta potties and stuff, but they do some other things, too, they have 12,000 porta potties that are manufactured either in Minnesota or Los Angeles and the units are purchased in bulk and distributed from San Marcos to other locations across Southern California. This location holds Blue Bulk water tanks for emergency services, that's another service that they provide and so they'll actually provide portable water for emergency type situations like when there's wildfires or with the hurricanes that are taking place on the East Coast, they'll actually ship water out there as well. They have contracts with FEMA, which I didn't know, that was interesting to learn. They have about 100 employees in San Marcos and 500 total throughout the company and they like to hire locally. One of the things I was impressed when we were touring, I don't think it's in the notes, but they have on the second floor of their offices, right off of Mission, they have a big, large call center, what would you say, about 15 to 20 stations?
At least.
Yeah, and so, those types of services are very easily outsourced, but yet they've made a business decision that they're gonna keep it internal with their company, but also here in San Marcos, so those are, you know, 15 to 20 jobs that they've made, what I think is a great decision for our community to have employment here in San Marcos, I thought that was really neat. And they're always constantly trying to do things more environmentally friendly. They have six electric trucks in their fleet, they're getting solar panels installed and they're switching a lot of their processes from paper to electronic.
So, that last slide, if we could go back one, that is a portable, it's gonna be either a portable shower facility or a portable ADU restroom facility and shower facility, they run the entire spectrum of services. I'm not sure if you mentioned it, but they have a contract to provide any number of those services in 2026 and then in Los Angeles, when they host the World Cup, and then in 2028, when the Olympics come. And they are, they're based here in San Marcos, of course, and you know, the DeYoung family, a lot of them think about the dairy. As it went down generationally, they split off, so Eric is on this side and then he has relatives on the dairy side and they still have their cows up in Norco, bring them down here, do all the packaging, sending them out and they, it's a big family, so everybody gets along. This was very interesting, Mike mentioned the employees in the call center. They do reach out locally, so the people that were working there, San Marcos Vista, Escondido residents, almost exclusively. And it's a great way to get into the company, we met some of the employees that have been there over 30 years that started out, you know, cleaning the porta potties where they come in and now they run management positions. They're very big on that, bringing you in, getting you started and letting you work your way up. Just, you really get a sense of a family operation, it was very enjoyable. And driving down Mission, when you drive by, it's easy to look over there and say, oh yeah, I know what that is, until you go in the yard and realize how much space they have and the economy of space, the way they set everything up so that they can get their product out. They have their own well, so as equipment comes back in, it needs to be cleaned, they use well water, they don't use city water, they take care of it and they have a system in place to take care of that water so that it is processed out and cleaned and then they do provide bulk water for emergency situations, as was mentioned, fire situations or search and rescue that will be protracted, they can bring large bulk water containers out. A lot of involvement in the community.
So, where does the bulk water come from? Just curious.
Yeah, so they, at one time, they owned the Palomar Springs Water Company. They sold part of that off and including the name, but they still have access to the water, so it's labeled as Blue Bulk, is that correct?
Yeah, Blue Bulk. They sold off the bottle water service from the spring, but they still maintain water rights to the spring.
Right, so the water is purified water coming right out of the ground?
Local water.
Local water, Palomar Mountain.
Nice, okay. All right, council commentary, anyone have anything? Nope, everyone's excited to go watch a Padre game. Okay, all right, well, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening and till next time. This meeting's adjourned.